It is seven o'clock. Good evening, how are y'all? Today is November the 10th, 2016, and it is 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven...
Thou will be thy name. Thy name shall become known. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this year our due reward, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from sin. In thy kingdom, in thy glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. And now I would like to establish a forum. We have Councilman Dejada, Councilman Ortiz, Councilman Jimenez, and Councilwoman Gantu. Thank you. And before we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilwoman Ortiz would like to say a few words.
Thank you very much. First off, I would like to say Happy Veterans Day for tomorrow. That day is especially blessed. And I would like to thank all veterans here and in Florisville and the United States. And for their honor and courage. I would like just to say that in regards to our veterans, as you go outside, there's a Veterans Monument. And as you go to the event center, the naming of that center is a service member, KIA, Kill in Action, La Vida de Leon. And Council just recently passed veterans with the support of the community for our plot benefit and the first responders. Council had tabled the naming of the sports complex. I intended to name it the Veteran Sports Complex, but it was tabled. I'd just like to say that I support and I honestly honor all service members. And I would like to say thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts. And let's pray for them. Let's thank them, let's help them. And God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the U.S. pledge and the Texas pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the floor to citizens' comments. We have no comments, we'll go on with the agenda and the presentation and discussion. Item 1A is Phelps' 2017 budget. Mr. Duke?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I have a presentation here for the 2017 Phelps budgets. This was approved by the Board of Trustees on October 26th. My presentation is from the same info that your packet will look. It's formatted just a little hopefully better for presentation purposes. And I'll be covering both the operation and capital construction budgets. I'd be happy to answer questions along the way. So first up, wow, that is kind of small up there. This is about half of what, I'll have two slides here on the operating budget. So I just wanted to address a few things here, highlighting them. You'll see some fairly significant increases or decreases in the 2016 compared to 2017 budget, the projection versus the budget. A number of these things have to do with where we're coding our labor today. It's really putting them in the correct places that we've been a little bit lax in not doing. So moving some labor time out of operations to maintenance, for example. So you see one is going down by about the same as the others going up. Same thing can be said about the storeroom. It's mainly recoding our labor correctly. If you flip the page too. Here, this reflects more of the customer accounting and the general administrative portion of our operating budgets. Both of them are going up slightly. Again, part of this is moving labor to the proper place where we really should be coding it today. I'd like to highlight a couple of things here. Customer-related expenses, about the third row from the top, is a pretty good increase. This is reflecting where we have, we're embracing technology coming into this, into the Phelps system, ultimately helping our customers get better information. And then if you look at employee benefits, you'll see that one going up as well. I think we all understand, you know, health insurance, for example, really affects this one. But at the end of the day, if you look at the bottom line, 2016's projection versus 2017, you'll see that there's only about a $95,000, $96,000 increase, just a little over 1% projection to the budget for this from per year win to next year. So really holding this pretty flat overall. Any questions that I can answer? This is just really the same information and kind of reformatted into pie charts. This represents this overall operating expense. Seventy-six percent of it, as you can see here, which is about $23 million, is what it costs us for buying wholesale electricity. So it's a big chunk of our budget. The other 24%, $7.3 million, is really what we have most control over. And the next slide will demonstrate that. In this pie chart here, this is broken down. The transmission operating is just about $10,000. We don't spend much on that one. Distribution operations is a little over $3 million, which represents about 43%. Customer-related expenses, again, another 32%, about $2.3 million. Spent a little bit of money, $167,000 in our storeroom. And then the remainder, about $1.7 million out of the 7.3 that's in this pie chart are in the general administrative. And I have one more slide here before breaking that particular expense down.
I was gonna ask a question. How much percent are your contracts now, like, are we basing the land posts and stuff? Are you all almost finished with that, or?
No, sir, that will, we are contracting it out. We have Chain Electric as the contract company that we're working with. We have one crew that, that's what they will be doing. That's a part of our business that probably will never go away. And we find that that's very cost-effective versus our staff to do that specific job with a contractor.
That's more cost-effective than we're doing it in-house?
Yes, sir. The cost is significantly cheaper. If you, on the next slide here, excuse me. This represents the general administrative expenses. And just kind of going through and hitting a couple of them here. Administrative payroll is a little under half a million dollars, which is about 29%. We use professional services, certain places where we need expertise that we don't have within the company. Insurance is another $180,000. Employee benefits are $400,000. So all said and done, this is, this represents the GNA portion of the operating budget at $1.7 million. Before I move to the construction capital, any questions on operating? So this is a little bit of an eye chart here on the wall. But this represents our capital construction budget. So we're budgeting for just over $6 million in 2017, which is up about $800,000 over what we're doing this year. I'd like to highlight a few things of why we're, why such a big increase. Under the very first line, it says land buildings and improvements. We have a substation here in Florisville that has three large power transformers in it. One of those transformers is failing. So we're budgeting to replace that one. These transformers are multi-hundred thousand dollar just for the transformer. And then double or triple that for the labor. So we're budgeting for one of those to be replaced. And that, that's not something that we do here in and year out. This is once-a-decade kind of work. Under, excuse me, I'm sorry. That was under, the substations including land structures, what I was just describing. Let me back up, under the land buildings and improvements. We were putting, we've put some money in to investigate renovating our facilities here that are, you know, at the corner of C Street and Fourth. The building that I worked out of was dedicated in August of 1929. So it's 86 years old. We need to spend some time looking at what we can do there to improve it, improve things for our customers. We have the building behind us that used to be a warehouse that might make it, we might be able to make into a nice office building, attractive for our customers coming in. So there's some money put aside to look at that. That doesn't mean we're committed to doing it, but we need to spend some money to hire some professional services and get some good cost estimates in conception designs. In the poles, towers, and fixtures, and overhead and underground line items, you'll see some variations there versus projections for 2016 that look like they're down. But overall, these expenses are up. And Councilman, this is where, when we're doing the pole replacements, this is where it's showing up. We're probably gonna spend three-quarters of a million to a million dollars working on pole replacements. And again, this is an expense because we're, distribution utility will continue forever.
On these poles, are you replacing every pole, whether it's new or old?
No, sir.
Or you're just replacing the ones that needed to be replaced?
We have, we're hiring, we're finalizing the contract today to have a professional company come in, inspect, test the poles, and provide a report back to us.
Yeah, I haven't done that before.
It's been a number of years since this was done, and we're working through the backlog of those poles.
I understand that. So they're replacing the poles? Have they inspected them to see if they were good enough?
The poles that we're replacing today have been inspected in the past and were deemed to be replaced at that point in time. And we're just cleaning that backlog up. We'll finish that this year. The poles that we'll identify in January, February, maybe a little bit into March, we'll be doing in 2017. So we're doing them immediately after the inspection. We're anticipating 6% to 10% of the poles that are inspected will probably be that. So that's what our budget is based on, is that forecast. We'll find out shortly.
I know the storm had damaged a lot of new poles, but I don't know, are we just replacing those or replacing everything?
No, we certainly don't want to replace the pole that has 25 years of life. But if it's an imminent failure, it gets replaced immediately. If it, if it has six months to a year, that's what we're focused on replacing during the year. But again, this is an expense that we hadn't traditionally been doing. But we have 40,000 poles. We need to be inspecting them on about a 10-year cycle. And so it will be an ongoing expense. If you look at the service and meters row here, we're also putting in money to begin the development of advanced meters. We need to spend some time investigating and developing an RFP, going out on the street, evaluating the responses, so that we can put in advanced meters, or we refer to as smart meters as well, so that we can provide the benefits that customers of our neighboring utilities are receiving today that we can't deliver without that type of technology.
Sure. What type of smart meter are we looking at? With a sunlight at the meter, or Wi-Fi? What are we looking at?
There's a variety of systems that are out there. We have not committed to any particular form or fashion. Some are power line carrier-based systems, meaning the signal's transmitted over electric wires. Some are wireless, so it's a radio.
What do we have right now?
We have two fundamental systems today. One is the traditional meter that you spin, see the dials spinning around and the counter at the top going around. You have to walk up and physically read that meter.
You have to walk up?
And so we have meter readers that do that. In addition to that population of a meter, we have some that are drive-by capable. What that means is that they can drive through a neighborhood, activate the handheld unit that they have and without actually putting their eyes on the meter, but they can get a read over the air. And that, without, you know, we're out in the field or driving, there's a safety aspect. Clearly, an expense that goes with that. What I'm talking about with advanced meters wouldn't mean we could read those meters from the office, over some communication media. So that's what this money is intended to do, is to help us investigate, what's the right system for Phelps?
Be more advanced?
Well, to be more advanced, but to, it can do a variety of things. For example, the meter can phone home when the power goes out. What does that mean to the average customer? Instead of picking up the phone and calling Phelps and selling us, you know, the electricity's out, we're gonna know. And we can respond in a more strategic way to that outage because we know more about the outage because it's more consistent, reliable data, for example. The other is that we can also present data to the customers so they can understand their behavior that might help them with their bill. I'll give you an example. Something running at between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 in the morning, if you can't see an hourly kind of read, you don't know that you have something that's problematic in your home. But we can help provide that and you can reduce your, you know, your electric consumption and reduce your bill. So I think it's exciting, but we need to put some money in so we can get the right system for us and our customers. A little further down, under tools and transportation, there's a large line item, or a large ticket item. We're gonna replace one of our construction bucket trucks. This truck was purchased in 2003. It's 13 years old. It's got lots of hours, lots of miles. And if we don't fix them right now, they're breaking down all the time. Or if we don't replace them, they're breaking down all the time. So it keeps our guys from the field doing the job that they should be doing. These trucks are $250,000 to $300,000 though. It's quite expensive to buy one. We have four of them. So we'll be replacing these probably every other year, every third year, we'll be back here doing the same thing to update the fleet. And the last thing I'd like to highlight because it is a pretty good change is the office and computer equipment. This again is being, we're trying to integrate things into our back office and add items like bubble workforce that help us respond to our customer. But it takes capital to do that. So at the end of the day, we're, you know, increasing the capital budget about 15% over this year's budget. But I think, we think that this is absolutely necessary for our system to provide to our customers. Translating that into pie charts here. This one represents the distribution, or transmission, substation, distribution, and then the general things. Transmission and substations, about $800,000, or 13%. The distribution represents about 72%, a little over $4 million. And then the general common, things like tools, communication, facilities, you know, trucks, that they fit in that category, about $900,000, or 15%. Breaking down the distribution, I won't read every number here, but hit the larger ones. At about 30% or 5, the $1.5 million is poles, towers, and fixtures. This is, you know, blocking and tackling of our business. Overhead and underground devices, same kind of thing. This is where all the other parts and pieces are gonna show up. And then lastly, the transformers and special equipment. If you look at those three items together, that represents probably about 70% or 75% of that budget. These are, this is what we have to have for our business. This one is particularly important to you. This represents what we forecast that we will be distributing to our three city owners, obviously Florisville being one of those. We're forecasting a flat, or basically flat from this year to next year. We've had growth in our customer base. But we've also had, been impacted by what's relatively mild weather for our business. So our revenues have been down simply because we had a lot of nice rain throughout the year and we didn't have, you know, a month of August of 100-degree weather. So the fact that it's flat, I think, is a positive here. It's not, it's not gone down, but just slightly, even though we've had modest conditions for our business. So we're forecasting that the city of Florisville will get just under $700,000 over the course of 2017 as the payment for, for the dividend for owning a portion of Phelps.
Mr. Duke, where do you see the forecast or projections for our population?
It's an interesting question. I wish I had a great answer for you. We're seeing a continued growth of about 1% month over month. And it hasn't been changing in the one year I've been here, so it's hard to speak much longer than that. But we're not hearing of any major change one direction or the other. So I would forecast, at least for the next year or two, probably a kind of rate. But I think more of the growth has been in the county than in the city, if I had to forecast.
But as you see population, residential population grow in the county, are you seeing more business growth than in the city?
I think that's accurate, yes. We're seeing a pretty steady commercial activity within the city limits. You know, things along 181 and other places. So yeah, I think that would be favorable to say. The last line I have for you really kind of puts everything back together here. So if you look at them, I kind of start at the top. We're forecasting a total revenue of just under $39 million, $38,888, including power sold and income that comes in from other things, those projects that are going on, for example. Going down through the expenses, there's about $30 million that are associated with the operating portion of the company. And continuing down, it leaves a balance of a little over $5 million that we could spend on capital simply from the revenues that are coming into the company. As I just told you, we're forecasting a need for a little over six, so that leaves a little bit of a balance. If you look at the very bottom of this chart here, we're funding $5.2 million out of the $6 million from revenue. And a little over $800,000 would be from the bonds that we've gone out on the market and already have in place. So that would, that's where we make up the difference, is the bonds that we have funds for already. Is there any other questions that I might be able to answer for you?
Are you, Lauren, any more money in 2017?
We are forecasting, and we've been working with the city manager here, anticipation would be we would be going out on the market in late '17 for funding in early '18. And we're, we're working through what the numbers would look like, but that's the timeline expectation at this stage.
Do you know what, what dollar amount?
I'm gonna tell you, it's probably the same neighborhood as what we borrowed the last time, and that was about $9.5 million, if I'm not mistaken.
Any other questions, Council? Comments? Thanks, Mr. Duke.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you. We'll go on to the second item under Presentations, Emergency Sirens Stents.
Thank you, Mayor City Council. In your package, you can see that unfortunately, we were not able to receive the grant for the sirens as proposed. However, our consultant, Langford Associates, may say we did score really high. They just rented their money before they could fund us. And that is in her email where it says that they had $3.5 million for projects. Unfortunately, the city of Florisville did not make the cut, but we were high on the list. And so attached, you see, is the actual application that we put forward. The next round of applications is due January 2017. And so we will be applying again at that time, figuring that now we'll be higher on the list because that first round went forward. We also had an additional disaster since we originally applied for the sirens, which was the rain that we had in August. And so we'll be able to add that data forward. So we're hoping that we can be able to have those sirens available. I do want to mention that the locations won't just be here, it'll be throughout the city so that we can make sure that we're covering the entire city. And they will go off simultaneously. And I know historically, they like to go off at noon. So we set it off to go off on noon. Not every day, but on our testing day, they'll go off at noon.
Can this item, can you go ahead and place it on the next agenda for approval this early, or do you have to wait till later?
What I have to do is get some information that we need from Langford and Associates and run some things in the advertising paper that'll happen in December, and it'll be on the December 8th agenda.
Okay, thank you. The next item, any questions on this one? Council?
The public really likes the siren big month.
Yeah. They've been asked about it. That's why we asked for it to be placed on the agenda.
No problem.
The next item, the update on holiday extravagance?
Yes. In your package, you should have a copy of the advertisement, the poster that went out for that, a copy of the contract with Bill and Janine's company. He did it the last year before our staff came on board, and so he's putting it together. It said that, just to let you all know, that Margaret Tahada has agreed to be my eyes right now at the event center. We did a net and advertise, but I think we're gonna re-advertise for some more people for the position that's available in January. So in the interim, we needed, and Margaret has agreed to wear two hats. So her office has transitioned until we're able to secure new staff. Mr. Angelini's contract is here, and I did review it with the attorney. For him to help run, what's different this time than his contract before is that he doesn't get a percentage of negotiating the contract for that. And so this will not exceed $10,000. It depends on promotions and what he gets in. We did get a little late start, but I have run on and solicited, Gloria Martinez has agreed to come and help us sell the tickets. As I called her, she is my secret weapon. us sell the tickets. As I called her, she is my secret weapon. She has had us to help us sell the tickets. We're selling at the front desk as well as our ticket office in the evening and on Saturday. And so we're really excited about that. And when I wrote this, we had sold 400 tickets, and Gloria came in tonight and said she had sold some additional tickets as well. So the tickets are going quite well.
You sold 400, you said?
Yes.
400 tickets?
This is 10 tables, yes, sir.
Individual tickets or tables, sir?
Well, each table has 10.
Okay.
And so it's not hard to get a four, just 10. So we're really moving forward. Bill and Janini is moving and pushing, so we should be able to make our numbers of almost 1,000. So we're hoping to do that. And I do want to thank Gloria upfront about working so hard on the tickets. And if you're interested in me...
Commercial. Come see.
Come see Gloria. The advertising will go out on the radio and the TV, you'll start seeing them very quickly. If I can do my commercials, since it is on the agenda, right now, VIP tickets are $400 for a table of 10. For the month of November, in December, those tickets go up to $50 a head, and so those tables will then be $500. So that's our special. They have, so we sell them here and at that, and if not, when in doubt, call Gloria, she'll be able to help you out. Okay?
Everyone want to see Gloria after the meeting?
Yes, and just to clarify, how many secret weapons do you have?
Two.
How many, what was the question?
I have two. And if I tell you, I have to kill you, so.
Council, any other questions or comments?
And just in case anybody who doesn't know, the date, the date of the event is December 10th, Saturday of the event. Ramon Ayala.
Can you get the accordion?
Yes.
Henrietta, I want to ask you a question. I wasn't on the council last time when they terminated the extravaganza. This could happen again with the new council, right?
Well, councilman, if I may say, I wasn't here at that time as well. Just to bring you up to date, that, your headliner, Ramon Ayala, is, was $30,000 we've contracted with him, and we have paid 2/3 of that contract according to that. So at this point in time, you're not going to get that back. And you are probably due to pay him to remain it because we're less than 30 days out. And so if you cancel the contract at this time, you have to pay him regardless. We have a local band that is premiering The Good Time Band. This is their final performance. It's one of Florisville's own. We have contracted and paid them 50%. Typically, you pay 50% when you sign, and then 50% when they show up on that day. As well as, come on, I can't do all those names. There's three bands we're having for that night. We're also having a toy drive, as we did last year, councilman, for the Blue Santa. So I'm looking forward to this event, but at this point, you can lose a lot of money if we don't do it, and I have to refund all those tickets, which will not be fun. So we're hoping that we can move forward with this event. As I said, it is on December 10th.
How many tables available do you have?
I believe we have over, how many tables, Gloria?
I think we're going to set up for like 100 tables. And my town couldn't tell you exactly how many tables we have left, but it's going a little bit.
It's going fast. Gloria, put it on her Facebook, boy, that's a dangerous place to be.
It'll be better once we get all the advertisement out. We get the posters tomorrow for most of the county meetings, and Monday, we're going to work at going to all around the county and work on all of the posters. So it should be there.
I have another question. It might sound weird, but why do we have, why do we have to pay $10,000 for Bill, for Bill in Janini?
All right, so there's, there's a base price, there's a base price, because he's putting the promotions together. He's out there promoting, working with the radio stations. He's working on that. Staff is not doing that. And just for a reminder, he did that last year as well. So he's put it together. And then he has to help negotiate contracts with the sound company. He's also helping us put together for food vendors that's going to be there, and to be there the day of the event, and towards security, and those kind of things is what Bill and Janini do. So his base contract is $5,000. After that, if he gets any promotions, if he helps us with any sponsorships, and he gets a percentage of that. But the attorney and I work together to make sure that if he gets all the bells and whistles, the most he can make is $10,000. We anticipate a lot less, but it's a not-to-exceed amount.
Okay, when you said food vendors and stuff, they're going to have food vendors around outside?
Yes, sir. We opted to have some food trucks. Last year, we had dinner served, but it was a little cumbersome. And so we're going to have food trucks available during intermission, different times to sell. Sawyer's is one of the trucks that we are working with to food, to vent. Fluss is another one, and this one, other one. We wanted to have some local vendors as well to provide. So people can step on the patio and eat food and things such as that.
What about the alcohol?
Fluss has already agreed.
I'm sorry.
Fluss has already agreed.
So Fluss has, they have confirmed.
Oh, good. Thank you. People were asking about them, too.
You said something about the alcohol here, I missed a question.
Yeah, the alcohol. And they bring their, the policy.
We're waiting, we're anticipating for B, I'm sorry, for A, to approve that on their next agenda meeting. As of today, they cannot, but quite sure that they are planning a meeting and will host a meeting, and that is definitely one of the things that they have said that will be on the agenda. Mr. Joe Tahada has stepped up and is working for, definitely for Foray, and taking leadership of the concessions for liquor on that evening.
With, with all this said and done, and with the, with the progress and everything, do you see some, the city in the black with this event?
It's too early to tell. I really don't see what we're doing on our sales. However, we had already prepaid for a lot of the advertising that I'm using. You remember Ms. Murray? We paid for a block of advertising, and so we're using that advertising that's already prepaid. So I, so I don't necessarily, will count that to this one because it was already prepaid. But it's a little early for me to tell you when I need to see what it's going to cost me. Now, we're not taking a percentage of what the vendors make, we're just charging them a flat fee for them to come and sell.
My opinion, $10,000 is too much.
Is it not to exceed?
No, no, no. $9,999, it's too much.
It's, it's a not-to-exceed. We, we know he's going to make at least five, and then the other, it depends on whatever he comes for.
If the networks, the networks are promoting it, and I still think $9,999, it's too much.
Has this contract already been approved, right?
Well, because of the dollar, my attorney can speak to that.
That's why the not-to-exceeds, and the councilmen. So obviously, you know, Henrietta has a certain limit on the authority which she can enter into. So this was put in to keep it down. He's only guaranteed to make $5,000 for the work he does. If he brings in all these other sponsorships and things like that to get up to the other $5,000, he only gets 15% of what he brings in. So it could be, if he doesn't bring anybody else in, he only makes $5,000. But if he brings in another $10,000, he'll get another $1,500 out of that. So it has to bring in money into the event for him to go up above that $5,000.
My opinion is that the name itself will be sold out.
It will be sold.
It will be. It will be sold. That's a consensus.
Thank you so much.
Another question. For us to be, to break out even, how many tables do we have to sell?
I didn't bring that report in.
Oh, you didn't?
But I will work on that and get that back to you. Because I think when Tony did the numbers, we hadn't actually set the price for the tickets, and we discounted tickets because we wanted them to sell. And I think some of his numbers he brought was $35.
Was he going to be in charge of the beverages and everything else?
The Foray, Mr. Joe Tahada, yes, sir. He'll be in charge of anything with the alcohol and the water.
Any other questions, council? All right, thank you, Mrs. Turner.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So we'll go on to item two, all business. And council members, they'll have already read the minutes. We can vote on this by consent. Would everyone agree to do that? Can we vote on it by consent? So we do all of them at the same time?
That's fine.
All right, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes? August the 25th, September the 8th, September the 12th, and September the 22nd by consent. Okay, I have a motion. May I have a second? Also, did you second it? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? You can abstain, councilman, if you haven't read them. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Three, one, two. Councilwoman Tahada? Did you vote? Okay, I didn't see your hand, sorry. All those opposed? Councilwoman Ortiz, you want to abstain?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Madam Secretary?
Read zero one, mayor.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll go on to new business, and I'm going to move item H up. And item H is the CNA of a resolution, approving a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of the Florisville Economic Development Corporation Sales Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2017, approving the execution of a purchase and investment letter and other instrumental procedures related thereto, approving other matters related thereto, and approving a sales tax remittance agreement and an amended project agreement and declaring an effective date. I will call up Mr. Lambert. Is he here? But we do have Ms. Cassand, Leslie. And Mr. Baker, thank you.
At this point, the FEDC has done everything that our attorneys have said we need to do to move this project forward. What we need tonight is council approval to the resolution that will allow us to use bonds as a way of financing this project. And then with that and a whole bunch of signatures, I think Leslie's ready to bind all of that up and send that to the Attorney General for review. And that's during this waiting period between now and January 3rd, funding date. And Leslie, go ahead and share.
Mayor and council, thank you for letting me speak a little earlier in the agenda. Appreciate that courtesy. Basically, what we're asking today on item H, on October 17th, the EDC board met. We presented the bid for the bonds from BB&amp;T, Branch Banking and Trust Company. The board, after discussion, accepted that bid for the bonds and approved their bond resolution. And what we're asking of you tonight is to approve, to pass a resolution of your own, approving their resolution authorizing the bonds. That's basically a step required by state law. Although the EDC is the issuer of the bonds, it does require the governing body, in this case, the city council, to give final approval of that resolution. The other item, that, the other two portions of item H, aside from the resolution, is to approve the sales tax remittance agreement, basically formalizing the movement of funds once received from the control of the sales tax revenue that are dedicated, the 1/1% that's currently dedicated to the EDC, will be put in a separate fund for debt service for the bonds. That's the sales tax remittance agreement. And third is an amended project agreement, which is basically just an amendment of the project agreement you previously adopted related to the park project. I discussed it with your city attorney. It's basically incorporating some additional changes from your bond council. So that's all incorporated in one packet. And we're asking for approval of that resolution, those two additional items, and declaring an effective date of today's, tonight's meeting. And then we'll, as Mr. Baker mentioned, we'll forward that packet of documents to the Attorney General for review and funding of the bonds on January 3rd after the first of the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I've got a question. Just for the citizens of the City of Florisville, to let it be known that this money is coming from the FEDC and cannot be utilized for other projects such as roads, sewer plan, or anything else that's designated for the park use only, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And these monies cannot be utilized for anything else other than advertisement and for parks, correct?
The $1.4 million that's authorized under this resolution is dedicated solely to the park project, and the ball fields, et cetera, related to that particular park.
And the reason I'm bringing this up, because there's been a lot of controversy. They're saying that us as a council as a whole, that we're spending monies that we could be utilizing for drainage and for other projects, and this money solely can only be used for that this park, correct?
These particular funds are dedicated solely for that project.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you. Council, any other comments or questions?
If we pass, if we pass this item on the agenda, would we have issues if individuals or certain parties take it to court and block this item, this part, Nibu?
What's, I mean, if somebody found a foundation to file a lawsuit, anybody can file a lawsuit about anything. I don't know what grounds they would have on there. I have Jeff's out of town, and so we've asked him about, you know, what happens moving forward, because there is a time between when this is adopted and when the funds are delivered. So I think Monday, we're going to try to get everybody together to answer any questions there. But as for a lawsuit being filed, like I said, anybody can file a lawsuit about anything. Whether it would have any grounds to proceed, I don't personally see anything there. But it would all depend on what they claim and what the basis is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Hogg, you're making the motion. How much of this needs to be read?
You know we love our bold captions on there.
This doesn't have a caption.
There's more, it's...
Or I can read the captioning to the record. So this would be, I guess let's begin. This would be a motion to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Florisville, approving a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of the Florisville Economic Development Corporation Sales Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2017, approving the execution of a purchase and investment letter and other instruments and procedures related thereto, approving other matters related thereto, and approving a sales tax remittance agreement and amended project agreement and declaring an effective date of today, November 10th, 2016.
I have a motion.
Madam Mayor would like to have the privilege of making that motion.
And I want to second it. We have a motion and a second. We'll take time to do citizens' comments. We're asking for citizens' comments on this item.
That's okay. Mr. Gonzalez? Would you like to identify yourself, sir?
I would love to. I'm Fred Gonzalez, and I live in Florisville. And I had a, kind of a lengthy statement here, but let me just pick out some terms in here, and pretty much going along with Councilman Jimenez, I think there's some misunderstandings out there that are keeping this item as a no, we don't need it, we don't want it. And I would say common sense and several professional studies have clearly concluded that with rare exception, these fields, and I'm talking about the ones at the River Park, are unusable, unsafe, and should be condemned. The only practicable, entirely needed solution is to do what this project is doing, and that is moving them to the intended higher location and without further delay. Now, here are the things that I think keep the people from understanding it, as you've indicated, councilman. This money that we're committing to the project, FEDC is committing to the project, cannot, cannot be used for anything other than FEDC-related projects. They cannot be used for roads, sewer, water, any other general fund type of activities. Also, and I think this is very important, also the amount committed, and I know it's a large amount, $1.43 million is a big amount, but it does not, as some people think it will, it does not infringe on FEDC's ability to reasonably meet any and other requirements. All considerations have been taken. We have assured ourselves that we can do this reasonably and without, you know, cutting out any other ability for us to do what we have to do. And this can be verified. So what is the objection here for those, and again, I'm speaking to the choir, yeah, I know that, but for the record, I would say shame on those that would derail this project needed, directly, as I indicated before, for personal or uninformed reasons. That would be a tap privacy. This needs to be done for the people that need it, directly need it, and it's a safe issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Fred Gonzalez.
Madam Mayor, the message of concern for this, too. I believe that it is just propaganda that the opposition has always said all along, you know, like, "Catsamun Jimenez," you know, they're spending money for roads, the sewers, the, you know, all this and that. And that's, that's, that's where the miscommunication comes in with the citizens from Florisville. And that's, and that's where confusion, you know, starts, you know, their ego goes up, oh, we can't afford it. The city's not paying for it, not with this bond. It's the FEDC. And they have to understand that, my God, they're adults. But as you know, that it's propaganda, and it's going to continue and continue. And it works, just like the communist did. Sorry to say, but that's how it works. You fall in there, you're in. Shame on you. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll continue. Any other citizens' comments?
Madam Mayor, just another comment to add to what Mr. Ortiz said. Along with this $1.4, we've also applied for a grant, and part of the grant application, including a partnership with the FEDC. So basically, you're applying for the $1.4 with hopes of getting $2.4. But one cannot be done without the other. So if the $1.4 is squashed for whatever reason, you're also losing the other $1 million from a grant. Am I correct in saying that, Ms. Turner?
Yes, the city has applied for, as you know, for the Texas Wildlife Grant that was due October 1, to do to come back and see if we get that on March of 2017. They have indicated that because of the large match we put up front, but $2.4 is being put together and some of the plants are...
and some of the plans are here, that that was one of the reasons we scored very high. And Councilman Jimenez, I know you remember, they were talking about the scoring system. So we actually scored quite high.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, please step up to the podium and identify yourself.
Yes, Senator, we're at full development. I was just going to say, in case the grant funds, you don't get those grant funds, then you could maybe come see me about the community facilities loaning grant program. Because we can leverage with the loan you are going to be giving.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments?
Well, can I say something?
Are you a citizen? Okay.
I'm given that.
Give my part.
You've been working on this project. They started talking about it since 2006. That's how long ago we've been wanting, the citizens of Florisville have been wanting this project. At two, I think in 2010, it was put on the agenda. And then in 2012, it was stopped. And then we started up again. And now it's 2016. So I think it's a time for us to move forward and go ahead and start the park construction.
All right, if there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and take a vote. And, yes, sir, please step up. Oh, were you through, I'm so sorry, I didn't get you off.
That's when we started, right, in 2006, one year, so.
Yeah, we started talking about it around 2006.
Thank you, council. Yes, sir.
Jimon, more of a question than anything else to Councilman Jimenez's statement about confusion over where the dollars are coming from. A while back, I think y'all passed a tax note that had a million dollars earmarked for this park, which would be paid for out of annual taxes. Is that still correct? And if so, that's probably where the citizen concern is with regard to spending money on the parks opposed to streets.
Thank you, Jimon. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on to vote. All of us in favor?